Program. Twenty-five dollars from an anonymous donor for the middle school play. A thousand dollars from Cottonwood County Corn and Soybean Growers Association for the FFA program. And one hundred and forty-six dollars and seventeen cents from Wyndham United Services for the dare program. For the baseball program. We have twenty dollars from Brad Brad Shulman, a hundred dollars from Midwest Ag Advisors. Fifty dollars from Brenda Anderson, fifty dollars from Jason Anderson, fifty dollars from Sarah Anderson. One hundred dollars from Terry and Kim Anderson, twenty-five dollars from Sarah Barfneck. Fifty from Chip Bauer, fifty from Eugene Bauer, sixty from John Bauer. A hundred and forty from Nicole Blum, twenty from Mitch Boak, twenty from Riley Brown, twenty-five from Jenny Caldwell. Twenty from Taylor Caldwell, fifty from Tina Caldwell, twenty from Steve Clark, twenty from Denise Claus. One hundred dollars from the Citizen Publishing Company, five dollars from Addison Colbert, fifty-dollar Colbert. Uh, fifty dollars from Rich and Debbie Elness, twenty-five from Tara Elness, fifty from Angie Erickson. Ten from Henry Erickson, ten from Sidney Erickson, twenty-five dollars from Crystal Fast. Fifty-five, or excuse me, fifty from Nicole Freericks, twenty from Josh Garrison, twenty-five from Luke Gilbertson. One hundred from Kay Gross, fifty from Michelle Grunewald, twenty from Teresa Hocken, twenty from Dodge Hogan. Twenty from Riley Hogan, twenty-five from Heidi Hill, three hundred from Mitchell Crop Insurance. One hundred dollars from Mike Mike Jackson, twenty from Cindy Johnson, forty from Bob and Cindy Joyce. Fifty from Brian and Amy Joyce, twenty-five from Kelly Cleveland, twenty-five from Amy Crumb. One hundred from Nielsen Landscaping, seventy-five from Ron Larson, fifty from Keith and Cindy Losi. Fifty from Colin Lovell, thirty from Kobe Kobe Lovell, twenty from Sherri Maras, twenty from Charlotte Maras. Five from Tristan Maras, twenty-five from Wayne Maras, twenty from Andrew McLaughlin, twenty from Mike McLaughlin. One hundred from Amy and Ryan McNamara, fifty from McKenna McNamara, one hundred from Connie Meyer, fifty from Tim Meyer. Fifty from Tony Meyer, one hundred from Christie Miller, one hundred from Damian Miller, thirty from Deb Miller. Twenty from Lacey Miller, twenty from Cassie Muskie, fifty from Teresa Nelson. Uh, one hundred from Dane Nelson, fifty from Pierre Nelson, twenty from Teresa Novacek. Check, twenty from Chris Pepper, one hundred from Ben Pieter, fifty from Ann Pung, twenty from Jenny Quaid. Five from Connor Redman, fifty from Brandy Russell, five from Carter Russell, and one hundred from Tamara Russell. Ten from Lincoln Rupp, twenty from Cindy Riker, ten from Liz Riker, fifty from Sheila Riker, forty from Tom Shub. Twenty-five from Arlene Schultz, twenty from Shar Sitzma, twenty from Andy Scarple. Twenty-five from Karen Scarple, twenty-five from Nicole Scarple, twenty-five from Kim and Jay Soderholm. Fifty from Sue Splinter, five hundred from Brent Staples, twenty-five from Charlotte Swoos. Forty-five from Charlotte Thomas, twenty-five from Darren Teets, twenty from Chris Teets, one dollar from Quentin Teets. Three hundred from Jen and Clay Wellinga, fifty from Mary Lou Wellinga, forty from Joslyn Wester. Twenty-five from Devon and. Two hundred and fifty, thank you, from Devon and Jada Wilson, forty from Beth Witchin, forty from Linda Zabel. Five thousand dollars from Todd Queering, two hundred and fifty dollars from Lance Jackson, and fifty dollars from David Field. Thus ends a long list of donors, isn't it amazing to live in Wyndham? Look at that, wow, that's incredible, that is incredible, thank you, community. Okay, on that list, we do need a motion.
I will move it forward with many thanks.
Yes, many, 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 many thanks, that is incredible. Um, this is a resolution, so we will do a roll call vote, Matt? Brienne? Bruce? Angie? Lynn? Myself, yes, resolution passes. Mrs. Frank, do we have anyone for open forum?
No one for open forum.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is the consent agenda, uh, let's start with a motion. Okay, motion in a second, and barring wanting to draw out anything specific, uh, we will move on that, is there anything that needs to be pulled out? Okay, if not, all in favor, please say aye. Uh, opposed, same? Motion passes. Okay, next up, uh, we get to hear some information about the Disney trip. Uh, this is just information, we won't take any action tonight, but, Mrs. Pullman, please step forward.
Okay, so I'm just gonna start us off now. Since nineteen ninety-three, the Wyndham Band and Choir students have each had an opportunity to go and perform at Disney. And it's a one-time chance they each get. So this will be our eleventh opportunity to go down to Disney, and you can see, this, the first session here had just some things about like, what is the value as far as performance for our students, our students do have to audition to go. Not every group is chosen to perform, and so that is one of the real highlights is first of all getting chosen to perform, and then obviously performing. Um, and then, on this first sheet, we had a lot of performance learning, learning objectives, we're not gonna read through all of them. And the goals that we have as far as interpersonal skills, interpersonal skills, traveling beyond Wyndham, and some of the things that they experience at Disney. The dates that we tentatively have are March twenty-third through March twenty-eighth. That could shift just a little bit, depending on airfare, but we worked with Jacob Johnson and trying to find a time in our calendar where there's not a competition that won't prevent students from moving on to another level. There might be something happening, but it won't prevent students from moving on to another level in any kind of competition. So, um, last time it was fifteen hundred, we're gonna guesstimate seventeen hundred, but, you know, we, we don't know. It could come in right at fifteen hundred again, depending on what the airfare is, and what gas cost is at that time. Um, going over the itinerary here, do you wanna talk itinerary a little bit? Like, just a basic of what includes.
Yeah, so, um, we'll have one day set aside for travel down to Florida. Um, that worked really well last time, and then we have four days actually at Disney. Three of them are hitting the big parks there, we'll get the, the three-day pass. And then the fourth day, we are hoping to, at least planning to, have both performances on the same day. Again, because it's an audition process, we don't actually get to choose that, but we're hoping to get our auditions in very soon, so that we get first dibs, so to speak. Um, so, yes, three days in the parks, the fourth day performing, and then also students can still get access to like the water parks and other things, even without the three-day pass for those. And then the fourth day would be our, or, no, that'd be the sixth day, would be our travel home. So, again, we might shift it back a day, forward a day, that's kind of our, our zone, depending on the airfare.
And we are hoping to fly again.
Yes.
So. Having done it both ways, I'm just gonna say, definitely hoping to fly again.
Yes, we, you know, we had very minor issues on both ends, but it wasn't anything compared to thirty-six hour bus ride.
No.
So.
And when the Wyndham students landed in Disney and back when they got, they all cheered, cause for most of them it was their first flight. And, and so the rest of the plane all cheered with them.
They did. It was great.
Yeah, it was great, yep.
But, we were really proud, last trip of our students, they were so respectful, and on the, in the airports, you know, you hear about, oh my gosh, what's gonna happen? They did exactly what we asked them to do, they were so respectful of everyone around, and yes, we had some wait time, and they just waited nice and patient. I was really proud of them, and it made us really look forward to flying again.
Any questions that you might have, like, we could read through these four pages here, but. I know this is for information only.
Uh, right now, the tentative, how many people possible?
That is a good guess. Um, we just put, right now, we put eighty to a hundred, because we don't know until, once we have board approval, then we can actually bring it to the students and, and say, we'd like a tentative agreement, um, just so we can get those numbers in. Because once we do have them in both for flight and performance, they can't fluctuate by more than five percent. So, we have to be pretty close to the number on that.
And this is, um, three grades.
Right.
So last time, we just had juniors and seniors, and that's why we're taking a trip two years later, because that's when the current, or those sophomores are now seniors. So from now on, it would be more of a three-year thing, cause we're intending to keep, um, the Eagle groups, uh, ten through twelve. So, um, it will be more students than it was last time, because of having three grade levels, but we just don't know exactly how many.
We have one student.
On our board finally, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then we take action on that at the next meeting. Okay, and then for item number eight, uh, we get to hear some information regarding a cheerleading competition proposal. Coach Schroder.
Um, my name is Alyssa Schroder, I'm new to the coaching world, this year was my first year coaching. Um, I have some of my cheerleaders with me today to explain why they also would want competition cheer. Um, but first off, we just wanted to say, we had a really successful year this year, um, football season. We had almost double the numbers of what there has been in the past. Um, we traveled to all of the away games, they said that they haven't really done that in the past either. We can collaborated with the Jackson County Central Team as well, a couple times, we went there and learned new stunts and new skills, which they all really enjoyed. Um, then for Wyndham Cheer, or, Wyndham, sorry, Winter Cheer, we had enough, we had high enough numbers to even have a winter squad, which I've been told hasn't happened in a few years. So that was really nice, um, we cheered at hockey for a little while too, which has never been done, but they got a little cold, so. We put that to an end, um. We also had new athletes who typically don't go out for sports, they're kind of reserved, but some of the quietest kids went out and really had the time of their lives. Um, after Christmas break, we also collaborated with Mankato State Cheerleaders, we had two of them come down and teach us some sideline dances and new skills too. And then, we also had our first winter kids clinic, which was a real hit. Um, instead of doing cheers like they typically do, they learned a dance in a week and performed it at a halftime game. No, you're fine. Okay, yeah, so that's the football. Yep. And next one. All right, so competitive, um, a lot of our kids have shown huge interest in competitive cheer. Um, we went to the state cheer competition this year, and a lot of the kids said that they're really motivated to get to that level and do whatever it takes to get there. Um, they wanna grow their skills, as you can see in some of the pictures, they've met a lot of friends from cheering this year. Um, especially with the Jackson kids, they've become really close with them. Um, they're determined to have a co-ed team, so, we're recruiting bullies. Um, they also wanna learn more advanced skills, so we plan on practicing more throughout the summertime until school starts maybe doing two practices a day, just to see how it goes and learn new things. So, pricing is one thousand dollars round trip for bus, um, there and back. Competition fees are roughly two hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars on the high end, um, according to Jill Winter, who helped me make this. Um, we're looking at maybe two competitions this year, just to ease into it and see how things go. Um, we need custom music that has Wyndham or Eagles in it. That runs around three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars, depending on where you look. Um, and then state and the banquet, that's roughly four hundred to five hundred dollars, so you don't need to qualify for state, you just sign up for state, um, it's a really rewarding thing. They have a huge banquet and celebrate the night before and have a dance, and then the next day you get up and go do your thing for two and a half minutes on a mat. Um, so roughly the total is four thousand dollars running on the high end. Um, so competitions are four to five hours, we would leave at five-thirty in the morning and get home no later than eight-thirty. Um, this year, state banquet is January thirtieth. And then, state competition is January thirty-first, it starts at eight AM, and depending on if you qualify for the finals, you're there till like eleven, but it's rewarding in the end. Um, so these are some tentative ones we're looking at, um. I reached out to other coaches as well, and these ones listed, they say are really great for first-time cheer um, competitions. The Greater Minnesota Cheer Off is one we really hope to go to in October. There's two different categories where you can cheer for a score that goes towards your year goal score. Or there's just one where you go and get judged, and they tell you things that you can work on without getting scored on. Oh, that's it, okay, so some of them want to present on why they would like competitive cheer as well.
So, um, I think that it should be like allowed, be, just because like, sorry. Just because, it's just like, um, like like, any like sports out there, such as like gymnastics, because it involves like tumbling, like round dogs, cartwheels, and then, um. Sorry.
You're doing just fine, take your time, okay? It's nerve-wracking standing in front of adults, so take your time.
Well, it's just, cause like, we could like prove ourselves to be like more than just like standing on the side, like, just like, you know, standing there like cheering. Yeah, I feel like we could just do like more.
I think cheer competition could, um, enhance teamwork, build social skills, and promoting positive school spirit. Schools should be, should have our cheer competition, because they encourage more school spirit and show students that they can get all along in different ways. Showing the cheerleaders that also do hard work, and it's more than just a small little activity. It's also a sport as much as others, showing that there's more t- teamwork, leadership, and communication. It enhances success and no failure, and it shows that it's okay to lose, and show that there's positivity and fun in every environment.
Hi, um, I think competitive cheer should be added to our cheer program, because it's pretty much like any other sport, you can compete against other towns and teams. And our cheer program has already grown together so much, and I would like it to grow more, even more. Most of the winter cheer team went on a state cheer competition and to go see a competition. And all of a sudden, it would be fun to add i- into our cheer program, and, yeah, that's all.
Any questions? How many girls were out in all the different ways this last year?
Um, so a total, I had about thirty-five. Um, so far for, I have our fall cheer sign up out currently, because we are planning on getting new uniforms. Um, our uniforms are like old, so she wore our, the uniforms we currently have. Um, so currently I have twenty-eight signed up for football cheer. Including a German foreign exchange student, tentatively, so, yep.
And how many are maybe interested in competitive cheer?
Um, just over half, so like twenty.
Well, we need tryouts, or will everybody be able to be a part of it, or?
If they are willing to do it, we're just gonna let them, this year, just make everyone happy. So.
If it isn't a co-ed, if it turns out that there aren't
Yep.
enough of a co-ed, is it the different classes?
Yeah, so there's, um, all-girls tumbling, all-girls no tumbling, co-ed tumbling, and co-ed non-tumbling, so, they are determined to do tumbling. They want to learn all the flips and back handsprings and all of that fun stuff, so. Yeah.
Well, thank you for taking the lead on this, that's great, I enjoyed it at the basketball games, the football games, it was so much fun to have you guys there, it just really brought a whole new level of excitement to the games, so I appreciate all the hard work you've all put in.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other schools in the area?
Um, Jackson does.
They do a competitive?
Yes, they do, they've been competing for quite a while. Um, Saint Peter is just bringing it back into the swing of things. Um, a lot of them are in the cities, but the few smaller communities down here are trying to get back into it, so. We wanna, they would like to be one of those.
And so I see you're asking for funding for about two.
Yep.
And I know you'd hope really to do more.
Yep.
Um, but this is a good start, and, um, maybe even this will, uh, allow for some space to fundraise, maybe to do a third or something like that, so. I think the ask is right, I think shooting for two is really, really a good place to start.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? We're proud of you, girls. The superintendent is here, the principals are all here, a bunch of adults are here, that, this is like a hard crowd, and you did it. Not very many students do it, so, good job, really good job.
Yes, very thankful for my group of kids. Thanks.
Okay, and we'll vote on that at the next meeting.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Barfneck, no, we have another one, you're pointing, oh yeah, you got a baseball game, yes, go ahead, Mr. Nielsen.
Thanks, I'll start with the middle school report. Wyndham Eagle Varsity Baseball just won nineteen to nine, just so everybody knows, that was good before we got here. Yeah, and the wind did indeed blow a few balls over the fence, so. Just a couple dates to look at here, coming up, some recognition, April twenty-second, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. We've got great school bus drivers, not an easy job, we really appreciate what they do, Kevin Hegseth and Palmer Transportation. April twenty-third, we've got two amazing administrative professionals at the middle school, high school. Uh, really incredible to help make things go around in that building, it's, it's awesome. Sonya and Marcia are absolutely incredible to work with. May second, School Lunch Hero Appreciation Day. There's been a lot of great comments about school lunches here, I'll tell you that, that doesn't always happen, but there's been a lot. Kids are really, uh, digging some of the new items on the lunch menu, uh, and everything else that's been going into that, so to Mandy and her crew, we, we wanna thank them, and then just that first full week of, I wanna point out, first full week of May, we will be celebrating our teachers. Teacher Appreciation Week, that's always a big week. Tomorrow, moving on, we are starting MCA testing. Ready or not, here we go, it's an awesome time of the year, and I just wanna point out to our district assessment coordinator, Jeff Huska, has been organizing and just doing a fantastic job of keeping everybody informed and up to date on, on what that's going to look like with our testing for the MCAs. We're gonna start with reading tomorrow and Wednesday, um, and then coming back after that, uh, little Easter break there, we'll go into math, and then the end of April, we will do science for some grades there coming up. I also just wanted to point out, middle school attendance, you can see the attendance right there, we've talked a little bit about attendance, I know, uh, with high school and everything else, and with our attendance coordinator Craig Taylor, just wanna throw some numbers in there for the year, middle school attendance is awesome. Kids are at school, they're, they're in seats, they're learning, you know, there's a few tardies here and there, things like that, but we worked through those things, but it's great, middle school, there are numbers, ninety-five point eight percent of kids are in the, uh, in the building in the middle school, fifth through eighth grade every single day. So it's really, really great. And then finally, I just wanted to include some action shots of seventh grade there too, if they made it in. It was kinda fun, I, I was making rounds and went into Mrs. Smith's seventh grade science class, and, uh, they were making plant cells. Um, and, uh, animal cells, they were using different goods. No, I did not sneak any licorice and orange slices, well, maybe one or two, it was a good deal, it was a perfect time to walk in, and the students were like, hey, mister, look at this, so had the opportunity to take some pictures, and, uh, they were very kind, and, uh, it was, it was really cool to, uh, see them making models of the, uh, plant cells and animal cells with Jell-O, with Play-Doh, and all kinds of fun things, so, kinda fun. So it's been a great, great, uh, month so far of, uh, April, and, uh, we're flying along, I know some kids reminded me, we're at like just just over thirty-some days of school left, so, absolutely incredible, so. Questions for me? Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, yes. All right, Mr. Barfneck, with the elementary report, please.
Hello, I try not to count down a day myself, so I'm kind of annoyed that he told us that, but, you know, it's all right. All right, uh, so just a quick recap about the elementary and preschool. Um, we did have spring conferences, got to touch base with a few, uh, parents and families, um, about how their kids are doing. Had kindergarten registration, which was my first one, and luckily I have an amazing team that helps me get through these things, because they have a system, and Marcy got that set up before she left and made it happen, so that was awesome. Um, I wanted to mention, uh, Jorge Sardaguarez and Christopher Morales Para, who through their Eagle Achievement Project, they donated some recess supplies to us. And, uh, yeah, that's, so, uh, we had an old parachute that we used for like field days and stuff, it had a big old hole in it. And parachutes apparently are not cheap, and so they got that, they got a bunch of playground balls, new soccer balls, and they got some quality stuff, you know, um, actual like, that it's going to be durable, um, and things that are going to help the kids have just a nice active recess. And, uh, so yeah, you can see, and they got some indoor activities too, cause you know, sometimes rain and snow, we get indoor days, so. Anyway, just wanted to give those guys a shout out, they had done some work early in the year to raise some funds that, uh, were approved here, and they got a bunch of gear, so. That was great. Um, Rising Eagles is just a thing that's coming up for us, it'll be a new program, um, in our special ed department, that we're starting to support some of our young Eagles with some higher needs. Um, and we're using a program that is made specifically for those students, and so, excited to have Santana Shover come over and lead that program and get it started for us. Some other things coming up, Dana already said it, MCA testing. We have second grade books and brownies, uh, PTO sponsored, coming up, uh, this week. We have our final letters training on Thursday, two years of letters, learning about the science of reading. I did, um, a little, an avid strategy at our staff meeting this past, uh, last Monday. And we did a little review about what they've learned, and about what the staff has learned, it was amazing, we use this, uh, strategy called numbered heads together. And groups talk, and then they send somebody up to share. They just have learned so much, so proud of the staff for what they've learned from the science of reading, ready to go with that, last training, April seventeenth. Um, we have field trip season starting, we have some zoo field trips, some circus field trips, trips to local parks. Lot of stuff going on with that. Um, we have visits to transition kids, we have visits from bridges to the kindergarten. And we have visits from fourth grade to fifth grade, so the kids can get used to the schools, see what the teachers, you know, meet them, see what the school looks like. Those are exciting times too. And of course, we have bounce houses coming up, um, as an Eagle Pride April Reward. So, um, that is just one of our things we do every month, a monthly reward for kids having the appropriate behavior and things like that, so we have bounce houses coming up in that one. Other news, I just told you about the numbered heads thing, that was fantastic, I wanna thank our paras and our subs, and our para subs, and other volunteers. Um, our students just received some top-notch care from these people that are there every day, and also that come in when other people can't be there every day. And they really do come in and make a difference, every one of these people is fantastic to our students. Also, thank you to Betty Smith, who's been our elementary secretary while Marcy's been out, Marcy's coming back this week, but Betty has done a great job for us, and we just have really truly appreciated her stepping back in to the school to help us out, it's been fantastic. Um, so, I just said thank you for supporting our youngest Eagles, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Barfneck. All right, we're ready for the high school report, Mr. Joyce.
All right, thank you, good evening, everybody, uh, just wanna remind everybody, the Eagle Eye is always linked here, so a lot of events get listed there that I'm not gonna speak to here, but, you know, many of you have students. a lot of events get listed there that I'm not gonna speak to here, but you know, many of you have students in the district, so it's great just to take a peek at that. I try to put the middle, high school pertinent events in that calendar. And you know, just so everybody knows what's going on in, in the coming weeks, so that they can come out and support. One of those items that, that isn't on there because it's a May event, but uh, May fourteenth, I, I did put in my uh board packet just for, I guess, a, a show of support that we can move forward with this, but the senior trip is being planned by Mrs. Pullman and uh we're looking at May fourteenth, it's the date for that. And heading to the Twin Cities, uh this year, Apple Valley in Minneapolis, the first stop, the students, and the students form a committee and plan this trip with Ms. Pullman's guidance. First thing they like to do is Urban Air Adventure Park. We did something similar to this last year. It's a lot of fun. Kids are hanging from wires in a very safe way. Um, you know, yep, it's very, very safe, but they are, they're dangling and it's kind of cool, but um but nonetheless, they wanted to go to one of those. Uh, we're going to a different park this year than we went to last year, but it's a similar concept where they have ropes course and things like that, but um, to my dismay, I don't think there's any go-karts this year, so there's none of that this year. But uh, after that, we, we're gonna grab lunch. I think we're looking on route to see between Apple Valley and the Twin Cities, a nice place where maybe we could sit down. I think maybe we've settled on a B-dubs, is that the plan? So um, I had nothing to do with picking that. No, I'm just kidding. Um. After that, we've got um the CSZ Twin Cities. So what that is, is it's um kind of the learning element of our trip, but it's gonna be kind of neat. It's outside the, the comfort zone. We challenged our students today with a quote about being outside the comfort zone to grow. It's kind of an improv comedy place, but also a lot of businesses take their, their, their um employees there and they, they get to get a little bit of comedy, but then they get put into situations where they have to pu- come up with the improv based on prompts. Okay, so they, they put them into situations where they have to improv, but also they're building leadership and communication skills in a funny event where they're also gonna be entertained with a little bit of comedy in the afternoon as well. So that's kind of a different event. We haven't done that on the senior trip and, and I think we've got over fifty students that have already signed up for, for the trip, so obviously busing is, is being booked. Um, and we're looking at um around, was it a hundred dollars, I believe, Ms. Pullman was the price? Yep. About a hundred dollars per student to, to attend the trip as of right now, and I think we have over fifty students right now confirmed. And there's about eighty-five in the class right now. So we would be leaving at about seven thirty AM that Wednesday and then arriving back home at about seven thirty PM. So. Is there any questions on the, the proposal on the senior class trip?
Would you guys be at capacity to add sixty students for the time of year? Or can you have eighty-five with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think thirty-five dollars. Once you get that sixty threshold, that's when it becomes thirty-five. Yeah. And we anticipate getting to at least sixty students, you know, but usually there's fifteen to twenty kids that say, I need to stay back and work or whatever it might be. We want all, everybody to go, of course. If there are no objections, can we move forward with that? We usually kind of get a sounds good. We'll keep plugging along on that one then. Uh, juniors, they took the ACT last week, seemed to go very well again. Um, I know Mr. Huska has been working hard at the MCAs, but also as our testing coordinator, very involved in the ACT test as well. So Jeff has done a great job in this year as not only instructional coach, but also our district assessment coordinator. There's a ton of moving pieces there and a ton that gets uh um, you know, registered with different websites and different things that gets to be pretty serious, especially when we're talking ACT. It's not the be-all, end-all test that people think it is, but as far as registering for it, it is kind of a high stakes thing. So Jeff's been doing a great job there. Uh, sophomores are gonna be on a class trip tomorrow. They're going to the, to Mankato actually, to visit a couple of schools. Uh, they're going to Bethany Lutheran College as well as MSU Mankato. So uh, great trip as usual. We can't fit South Central into that one this year uh because they have got a different event today or tomorrow, and this was the only day tomorrow that MSU had. So it's kind of a lot of moving pieces there, but still a great college trip to get our entire class onto a college campus to see what that looks like. Uh, Eagle Achievement Presentations, they are coming up two weeks from this Wednesday. All right, believe it or not. Um, students have been busy finishing projects as you can see with donations and, and, and what Christopher and Jorge had there. Uh, but April thirtieth's the big day. I put in Mr. Burton's email there, if you're interested in, in judging, uh, if you're new to the school board or even if you've how many, just quick show of hands, how many of you have judged Eagle Achievement Presentations before? Just two, yeah, so it's a great opportunity to see, cause, cause we kind of, y- you kind of get an idea for some of them, but you don't know all of them. And basically in, in our rooms, we have about five or six students that will um give their presentations to a roomful of about three judges, is what we try to do. So all of our judges feel like it's, it's a good opportunity to, to see what our students did for, throughout the year, cause you don't hear about all of them. And it's, it is a great opportunity to hear about what those seniors have done and also nice to see them kind of give a formal presentation. So it is a great event. We want to extend an invite to all of you to, to participate in that. And Mr. Burton, or you can email me and we'll get you connected. Uh, typically we do supper at five and then we get everybody into the rooms by about five forty-five and start at six o'clock, I think is usually the plan. And then they run from about six until eight thirty-ish at the latest, usually.
We have a community meeting that evening for the board. If we come buzzing in there at six, might we still be able to be judges?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. I would just let Mr. Burton know, hey, I won't be there for the supper, but I'll be there to judge. Just tell me where I need to be and what time. Uh, or I'm, I'm sorry, what room I need to be in, what I need to bring, if you need to bring technology or anything. So. But yeah, especially in your case, Joel, where you've judged before, you kind of get the, get how it works. If you haven't done it before, I would recommend maybe just a conversation with Mr. Burton just to understand what the expectations are. But um, we make it pretty easy for our judges to step in and be a part of that, so. May seventh is the CEO Trade Show. Want to invite you up to the community center to take a look at what our CEO students have done this year and the businesses they've created. Um, that's a, again, another great event. That's not only Wyndham students, but also Mountain Lake and Jackson students that are in the CEO class and will be highlighting their businesses in, in the trade show on May uh seventh up at the community center. So just about every Wednesday now, we got something fun going on. So that's the exciting thing about the end of the year. Prom is coming up May third. That's, that's only two weeks from this Saturday as well. So that's just coming up here right around the, around the corner. Big event this year. Um, you know, students are gonna be pretty tired when they get home with our after prom meeting over in Sioux Falls, but I think we had over a hundred and thirty kids signed up at the last check with Ms. Nibby. So we've got really good numbers and I think our numbers for after prom are pretty consistent with that, with not that many kids aren't going to after prom. So we're excited about a fun night there. It's fun to see the kids dressed up formally. But I'll end with this. Uh, our attendance rate at the high school and the way we come up with this number, it's, it's the amount of students that attend ninety percent of the time or better. Okay, so ninety-three point zero five percent of our high school students are attending ninety percent or more of the time of the school year. So that means about six point nine five percent fall less than that threshold. Okay? That threshold is important because the federal government considers somebody chronically absent if they miss more than ten percent of the school year. Okay? So what that means is about six point nine five percent of our high school is chronically absent. All right? The other ninety-three point zero five percent is not chronically absent. And they're, and many of them are far, far less than that. Okay? Obviously, we, we want this number to be higher, we always do, but just so that the board has an appreciation for what we have here. When I share our numbers with our state attendance group, people are like, well, that's not attainable. Ninety percent's not attainable. That's the, that, I've heard that in our meetings. Nobody can get to ninety percent. That's not realistic. And I say, we're, we're at ninety-three, like, we're at above that, well above that. But they think that's an unattainable number. Just so we all appreciate what we have here and what we're trying to do because I want us to be at ninety-five, ninety-six. These things correlate to positive grades, et cetera, et cetera. But we really ought to appreciate what we have in Wyndham because not everybody in the state has this. And some of our numbers that are, are represented on um the MDE website too. Paint a very different picture, picture, but the data is from a couple of years ago. And before last year, when, when I went into classrooms and did the attendance job every day and before Mr. Taylor this year where he's doing the same job, which allows me to get out and do walkthroughs of classrooms and things like that. So that data that's on the website unfortunately i- is from a couple of years ago when, when we didn't have the system in place that we do now. So um, Mr. Taylor, speaking of him, also Ms. um Sonia Paeta or myself, we're heading to the state, the MDE um state um office this week. We've got a, a convening of all of the districts in the attendance pilot. So um, we're kind of gonna hear about what other districts are doing, but also get some resources that we hopefully can bring back into our district and implement in the future. So we're excited to be in person with all of these districts. We've done a lot of Zoom meetings. This will be the first in-person meeting with the rest of the team that's um, going through this this year. So we're excited for that. Any questions?
Um, I'm assuming a lot of people are looking at you. When you go to these meetings, how the heck are you getting ninety-three percent? What are a couple of things that you would attribute to that there?
It, it's all about relationships and belonging. I mean, that's, at the end of the day, that's, that is it. I mean, our, our attendance policy, we need to follow and, and have, you know, i- it's set up to make sure that there's accountability for students. Okay? And, and to be honest, there, there's students in the senior class right now that are being communicated with that i- if you don't serve your time for unexcused absences, then you have to come in during open campus week. And if you have remaining unserved detention time, you will not walk at commencement. That's a privilege. And that's been communicated to our seniors. You can graduate, but if you have unserved detention time, you are not gonna walk at commencement. And I think our kids take that serious because our parents want to take that serious and kids want to do that. So, so they make up time, but that policy in and of itself is not the reason why kids show up at school. Kids show up at school because of what they're in, their activities that they're in, the, the classes that they're a part of, the relationships that they have with our staff, with other students. That's what keeps kids coming to school. Otherwise, you can find an infinite number of reasons to be gone any day, uh just as you could at, at a job. But the relationships that, that our staff creates with students and our, our students have with other students and, and in the high school, the activities they're involved in, if we don't have activities and strong activities, our students would show up far less than they do. I will absolutely say that because it's true. Students in the high school do need a bit more of a reason than my second grader does to show up at school. Okay? And, and they need to know that they've got that uh track meet after school, or they've got that golf meet in the forty-five degree weather. Okay? It, believe it or not, that is a reason to show up. And, and they know that they want to participate because they really like that activity and it keeps them coming to school. Okay? We don't hit ninety-three percent without that. And, and all of those activities that they're in, it's, it's relationships that they create with more coaches in our community to keep them moving forward, to progress toward graduation and be the leaders of our community. You know? I don't know if people saw on the paper this last week, there was a student that, you former Wyndham student that had Hildegard Bungie as a, as a coach and a teacher. Went on to be a teacher, but mentioned Hildegard as being so active in her life as somebody that was a role model. And, and somebody who put her on the right path toward a career through not only the classroom, but also, also through activities. And, and the relationships that our staff builds with students on a daily basis keeps them coming and, and our coaches are a huge part of that.
Well said, Mr. Joyce. Well said. And we want to continue to see programs grow and offer more opportunities. The band going on a trip, I mean, that's huge. And uh, I know we've all heard our own kiddos. When you don't have an activity going on, being sick ain't no big deal some days, but if you want to make it to practice and you know you have to be to school by a certain time, they're really thinking, hmm. So it's that mixture, cause a lot of students love the classroom a lot. Yeah, well said, well said, good answer. And I would love to see the look on those other schools' faces when you say, we're at ninety-three point five, we're doing the impossible. That's incredible. Good work, team. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Joyce? Okay, well, we'd love to hear the superintendent report, Mrs. Frank.
Good morning. Oh, good afternoon. What, what time of day is it? Good evening, board members. Sorry, I was, I was thinking a lot about students getting to school and that's morning time and you know, hopping in the van to go on to get them when they're, when they don't show up, you know, all of those things. Okay. So the April first enrollment uh data shows that we have eleven hundred and twenty-nine students for K-12 at Wyndham Mary Schools. This is three students more than the March first number, which was one month ago. Um, attached in your board packet is the um chart that we've been using now for three years to compare year to year, month to month. Um, we also just had a family of five move into the district just last week. So you know, this is always changing and it's you know, we always pick the first of the month to grab the data and report it to you. So that is in your packet. Uh, last week I found out that REMIC is going to support us um for a point five FTE position for a mental health support staff through SWWC. Uh, this is Rachel Rabberty's position. She's been doing this for about four years now. Um, so our students are very fortunate to have three counselors employed by the district as well as two social workers. We also have two wonderful um therapists from Greater Minnesota who work right on campus and support students every single day. Um, the additional position from REMIC has worked very well over the last few years to um provide proactive instruction in social and emotional development for groups of students. So the mental health provider teaches social skills to students such as like how to be a good friend or how to focus on work or how to regulate emotions or how to communicate effectively. So um, there's many more than that, but that just gives you a taste for what uh Rachel is teaching students in these um social skills groups. All right, looking ahead to the next school year, we have the final draft of the twenty-five, twenty-six fall in-service schedule done for our teachers in Paris. Now, this summer, we are gonna try something different with our paraprofessionals and they're really excited about it. So the co-op um puts on a conference. This year it is entitled Knowledge Empowers You. And it's a paraprofessional conference on August thirteenth from nine to three thirty in Worthington. So it's just like a conference that we've all been to, you know, maybe the MSBA conference or the MREA conference, something like that. Um, where there's a keynote speaker and then the pairs will have choices for breakout sessions. And so we've already given them the schedule for this. They've chosen breakout sessions that are applicable to their particular job. And they're just really excited about it. I keep hearing some really great feedback. So we'll take two buses to Worthington on August thirteenth with our paraprofessionals. Um, and then they will report for one day of our fall in-service rather than two days. Okay, so we're just gonna split that up a little bit um and still make it affordable. As far as the teachers go, uh, the calendar for this upcoming year has them attending all five days of in-service. It worked out well that way um to have a two-week Christmas break and then still get out of school before June. So um, anyway, they will be in for all five days, which is a good thing because of course we have some trainings that we need to complete. Uh, so Viewpoint went away. Viewpoint is our um data management system where we house all of our testing and assessment data. Um, that was purchased by Renaissance, Star Renaissance. So um, they were gonna sunset that at the end of this fiscal year. So we need to switch over to EduClimber, which is a Renaissance product. So we'll do some training in that um, and help teachers really understand how to use the data to drive their instructions. So that will be coming up this fall, uh for fall in-service. And then MDE announced that um they have a screener for grades four through twelve. And it's called CAPTIE. And we just learned about this last week. Um, but we will need to do some training around that as well. So the way the screener is gonna work for um grades four through twelve is they will take the STAR assessment. And then those students that fall below grade level according to the STAR assessment will then turn around and do the CAPTIE assessment. And that will give teachers further information, especially around a possible dyslexia. So that's the idea around the screener. So we'll go ahead and get everybody trained in um how to administer and how to read the results um on this assessment. All right, and then lastly, I just want to remind everybody that we have two community meetings coming up, April thirtieth and May seventh, both at five o'clock in the nest. We'll use the same format as the previous meetings where Jacob and I will have a presentation in the gym to start and then we'll break into um round tables for questions. So our architects will be there as well as KA um and others. All right, any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Okay, next is Board of Education. Anybody have any updates from any committees that have been meeting? Okay, if not, uh, we will move on to item number fourteen, um which is taking action on the uh presentation we got to see last week. Uh, to approve the sports medicine contract with Wyndham Area Health. Um, may we start with a motion?
Move approval?
Thank you, motion and a second. And again, um, everything was in our board packet again this week, which is the agreement between Wyndham Area Schools and the Wyndham Area Health to provide the sports medicine services to our athletes. This new contract This new contract will begin August eleventh and it is a three-year contract. Any discussion points, questions?
I just want to add that one thing that did my walkthrough today and went around the high school and I stopped in at the nurse's room. Saw a bunch of changes in there from the old days. You know, I added some, some material and some new equipment in there. But then I started asking some questions and one of the questions was, are you looking forward to having a trainer on-site? And oh my goodness, yes. You know, it was just in, just on there, the things that you can do because she gets the person sprained their ankle that night, well, all of a sudden they show up in the morning where there's the, just the collaboration from nighttime to, to her time. And then moving on to the nighttime then again. And so very excited about our possibly approving this.
Yeah, well said. This is another advantage of living in Wyndham. This is just a good relationship. The math on this is just incredible for our district of what we're being offered for this price. So I agree. Okay, any other discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same? Motion passes. Next, we are going to look at approving the resolution designing, resolution designing signatory authority. Mrs. Pepper, will you explain this to us?
Gladly. Normally, this is done every January. It's just part of your normal routine as you set up for the new calendar year. But with the changes that are going to be going on with me retiring and Holly Anderson taking over, she's going to start doing some of the stuff that I normally do. And so we need to give her the authority to do that on the behalf of the school district. So we're just adding Holly at this time, probably sometime in the fall, depending on when my last day is or at least next January, you will completely remove me. But this is just making sure that Holly has your approval to do what she will need to do as we start the training. So is there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pepper. May we start with a motion? Thank you. Any questions? Okay, if not, this is a resolution. So we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start over with you. Lynn, do you support this? Angie?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Brienne?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Resolution passes. Next, we're going to go back to Mrs. Pepper and she's going to review the budget to actual for the year so far.
Okay, in your document, in your back, it was a document and I'll bring it up shortly. Once again, this is comparing what our actual revenues and expenditure are compared to what our budget is saying. It's a point in time. This is as of March thirty-first. And this is the third and final review of the year. So we do it two other times. It was in October, January, last time now. And we do this because it's recommended by our auditor and also by, for our bond rating. So when we go through that bond rating process, there are certain questions they ask us, like, does your board know this? Do they do, so cash flow is a big one. This one's a big one. Audit information is a big one. So. So we're just going to do it really quickly. I apologize because it's a lot of numbers and they're really, really small. So we're going to try our best. And once again, please remember it's a point in time and there's always things that can happen to do this. So column C here is our revenue and so we're going to start with fund one. As of March thirty-first, it was sixty-two percent. Last year, you can see it was sixty-five. You know, you're always going to have some variations. I look for the big things. Is there anything major that can't be accounted for? So when you look at this, there's really nothing there. Three years ago, it was at fifty-seven percent. You know, four years ago, it was at sixty percent. It falls into the normal range. Our expenses, we're at sixty-one percent for fund one. Last year was at sixty-two. Other years, it's been close between sixty-five and sixty-one. So once again, nothing major. That also helps with our cash flow. So if we're right on target with our budget to actual, that means you have a healthy cash flow as well. So you know, it all sort of ties together. Food service, our revenue is at fifty-five percent. Last year, we are fifty-eight percent. Other years, it's been a little bit higher. Once again, I do know that we submit our claims, we submitted our last claims for February, no, for January. So we still have February and March to submit. It just takes Mandy time to get all the numbers from the different schools to get them. So that's a little bit why it's a little bit lower because we still have two months worth to collect. But once again, it's within reason. Expenditures are at seventy-one percent. A little bit higher than last year at sixty-five percent. I'm going to be honest, as we all know personally, food costs have gone up quite a bit from other years and it just is what it is. And I'm going to say that's probably the major one. Reason why is just slightly higher. Nothing out of the norm. Once again, do we all know what's going on with food prices? Yes, so it can be explained. So. We go to fund four. Revenues are at fifty-one percent. Last year is at fifty-five. Other years, fifty-seven, fifty-two. So once again, right on track. And our expenses are at sixty-four percent, a little bit higher than last year at fifty-six percent. Other years, they've been at sixty and sixty-six. So once again, it falls within the parameters. Debt service, revenue is at sixty-four percent. Other years has been sixty-two, fifty-nine. Once again, this comes completely from the state and from our county taxes. So there's really not much variation in that. And our expenses are a hundred percent. That means we have two bond payments a year, usually in August and February. So once those are done, you're done for the year. So we are all paid out for the year. And then the lastly is fund twenty-one. That's our activity accounts. It's a little bit higher, a hundred and six percent for revenue and expenses at fifty-one percent. I'm going to be honest, this is really hard to calculate because it's money that's raised by the students for the students. They are not allowed to spend more than what's their account. It's so hard what they want to spend it on. Because sometimes if they have the money, they want to spend it. If they don't have the money, they don't get spent. So, you know, I don't do a very good job on that one, trying to budget for them. But, you know, the easy part is they can never spend what they don't have. So. But are there any questions on this at all? Or the reason behind the report is another thing.
Well done. Thank you. Very informative and very easy to understand. You do a good job. Okay, item number seventeen, we get to set a special board meeting. Mrs. Frank, will you tell us about this, please?
Yeah, so every time we have an election, we need to canvas our results. And the timeline for this particular election happens to fall in between our board meetings. Typically speaking, we're able to do that just at one of our regularly scheduled board meetings. But for this, the timeline does not happen in our favor. So we will need to set a special board meeting for May twenty-first at five-thirty, right here in the council chambers. I've reserved it. It should be a really fast meeting, but we will need to convene and canvas those results.
Okay, so we know for sure at least one board member won't be able to make that work. That is a Wednesday. So before taking action on this, it is important that we know that we'll have quorum to be able to do so. Anybody have anything that we need to discuss before taking action on this? Ten minutes? Okay, well, we have verbal nods that we'll have quorum, so we're good. So may we have a motion for this, please? Thank you. Any, any more questions? If not, all in favor of this date and time, please say aye. Opposed, same? Motion passes.
Hey Joel, can I give a quick shout out to Teresa Haken? She's been doing an excellent job in organizing this whole election thing. And I'm going to be honest, this was not in my wheelhouse. Not at all. I never really worried about it. It's always someone else. So it was a big, steep learning curve for me and she's taken it and done a great job of learning and making sure that we're following what the timelines are set. Because it's all set by the state and the county. I mean, we follow what they tell us. So I just want to give a shout out to her because she's done an excellent job.
Yeah, and if, have you ever absentee voted? You don't just go in there and sign the little thing and slip it in the slot. It's a lot of steps. She is, I concur. She's doing an amazing job. I got to absentee vote. And it kind of blew me away how much there is to it. Okay, any additional items for the board this evening? If not, meeting adjourned.